We'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Prattville City Council to order. Thank everybody's attention, and we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation given by Councilman Renninger.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pray with me if you will.
Jesus, heavenly Father, we thank you for blessing us with the [inaudible]. We thank you for the privilege of breathing [inaudible] with this body as we make decisions and [inaudible] to make the right decisions, in Jesus' name, my brother.
Thank you, Councilman Renninger. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilman Striplin.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Argo.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Reni-
Here.
Councilman-
Here.
Councilman Fink.
Here.
Thank you. Having a quorum, I now call this meeting to order. The character trait of the month is boldness, facing fear and loss in pursuit of what is best. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. Gentlemen, these were distributed in advance, the special session February 14th, the city council meeting February 15th, the work session February 22nd, and the public hearing February 24th. Can I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Renninger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Any further discussion, corrections on the minutes? All in favor of approving these minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and these minutes are approved. Now we come to the public comment portion of our council meeting. Anyone in the audience is invited to come before the council to present on a topic whether or not it appears on tonight's agenda. I ask that you come down to the podium, state your name, address for the record, and then present to us. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to come before us tonight? Ms. Finnegan.
My name is John Lee Finnegan. I live at 211 Deere Trace. The first comment I want to make is regarding ordinance number one, number two, and resolution number six on the agenda. And Mr. Striplin, if I may ask you a question, are you entitled to vote on these? Will you be able to vote on these?
Yes.
Yes, okay. The reason I am asking is that because of the magnitude and long-term effects of these, that these would have on citizens, I feel every councilman needs to be present to vote on them. Citizens voted for their councilmen to represent them in their district. They are not being represented fairly when their councilman is absent, as is in the case tonight of District Councilman Argo. So please do not vote on these until all seven of you can be present. Number two, and I'm going to equate the next question to my own checkbook. I know to the penny how much money I have in it, and when therefore know exactly how much I would need to write a check to zero out that account. What I would like to know is how much money is in the city's account right now, as of March 1st, that the city could, in theory, write a check for to zero it out. I don't want lines of credit, et cetera. I want to know what the city has available, for example, in cash, in the bank, so to speak, that would be zeroed out if they wrote one check today. So what is the money available?
I don't know, and I don't know that anyone else does. I don't think we're prepared to answer that sort of a question in this type of encounter. So.
Mr. President.
Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Finnegan, if you'd be glad to, I'd be glad to answer any and all these questions tomorrow, or Thursday, Friday, just set up an appointment, and I'd be glad to get any and all this information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The last one is, I noticed, and this is kind of a simple thing, I noticed a while back that the sign stating "Enter Elmore County" is no longer erected on Cobb's Ford Road in the area right past Russell's. I drove around town and looked at other areas to see if there were other signs. On Highway 31, County Road 6, which is also the 82 bypass, and Alabama 14th, there are some signs, not only for Elmore County, but going in the opposite direction, on the other side of these signs, of these streets are signs stating "Enter Otoga County." When I went back to Cobb's Ford Road, I noticed there wasn't an "Enter Otoga County" sign. I contacted Elmore County today, and a work order is being put in for their sign, and would it be possible to have one erected for the Otoga County side?
I think we can certainly look at that. People need to know where the county line is, and that's a major thoroughfare.
I have a feeling, I have a feeling the sign, and I don't know, sometimes we see things so often, we just automatically see them, even though they're not there, and I think maybe perhaps when the sinkhole happened, the sign might have been gone at that time. I don't know, but I just all of a sudden noticed that the Elmore County sign wasn't there, and then I noticed the Otoga County one wasn't also.
I think that's a fair request, and we'll look into that.
Yeah, especially since they're on all the other streets and roads. All right. In closing, I still feel further cuts can be made with the city's budget. Headlines in today's paper talk about how Governor Bentley is asking for 15 percent cuts for most state agencies, and is asking legislatures to roll back their pay raise. Please do not pass this budget tonight until every avenue has been explored before enacting the sales tax increase and the wastewater fee increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finnegan. Any questions for Ms. Finnegan?
Tom, not a question, just, I believe that Robbie, Cobb's Ford Road, is that a state, or county, or city?
City.
City, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and was that it, Mr. Anderson?
Just clarification, at the point where the county line is a city street, it does become state route further out.
Okay.
And again, for your specific request for information, I don't want to misquote, or guess, or try to fumble around and round up a figure for you, or to put the city finance director in the same position, but we're happy to give that kind of information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing none, Mayor, do you have a report?
First off, I'd really like to bring some good news up here. We had a firefighter, Josh Brown, who happened to be traveling home the other night, and saw some smoke coming out of a house, and was able to actually save another one of our city family members, Carl Wilson's grandmother. So it, because of his alertness and so forth, he was able to save a life, and just want to applaud him for that. Other part of good news is Chief Watchworth, this is a new granddaddy, and so that's, whenever he does retire, that'll be some great news for him. Some other news I want to go ahead and bring to you guys also is about Teresa Lee, who was our webmaster. She worked diligently with Yvonne Thomas, who's with the Otoga County Extension Service, the Otoga County Board of Education, and the Otoga County Commission, also with the Children Policy Council, who was with some of the students, who were able to work out this policy, build up a website for this Children Policy Council, and through all that work that they, they were able to do, they actually came up and won, two of the students were able to win a full-ride scholarship at Trenton State, so that's ought to be some great news there also, especially since Teresa Lee was able to work with all these different agencies, and just, she's done a great job for us lately. Some other news that is worth mentioning, I believe, is that our February sales tax, which is, you know, actually the month of January, our sales tax, our gross numbers are up 9.36 percent. Our net on that, after rebates and so forth, was 9.48 percent, which I believe I emailed that to everybody, I hope everybody got it. I sent it to Albert Striplin, I hope you did get it on yours, if not, I'll resend it again. Year-to-date, business licenses are up 4.36 percent, and so that's a little, little good news here in the economy that we're in, where we're doing good. We still have a lot of, lot of issues that we've, we need to overcome, but if everybody's still pulling together, we can do it. I know our employees, I want to speak highly of those, of the city employees again, I know in our fire department, I'm sorry, in our police department, after bringing to light some of the issues that we've had, they were able to go back in there and cut another $18,000 or so out of their budget. So with that, we've been able to, whenever the council does decide to vote on the budget, we're able to save more money there, save more jobs there, because of some of our retirees, our retirees, we've had several people to step up to the plate there, and so whenever the council is ready to enact on the budget, we're ready. One big portion of the budget, like I've talked about in the, in the work session, and I need to apologize for not being here Thursday night, and you guys would not have wanted me here, believe me. It was, it was not a pretty sight. But anyway, talking, going back to the, the work session, as I did talk in it, mentioned up how there are different components of the, of the budget. One of them is the sales tax increase, that by my nature, by every fiber in my soul, I am not a person who takes raising taxes lightly. But the task that has been put before me, the one-cent sales tax, for this budget to be a balanced budget, for this city to operate and perform the services that they're supposed to, that we are supposed to perform, to, to keep the quality of life here, that, that we have become accustomed to, that one-cent sales tax is a key component of this budget. The wastewater increase is also a key component of that budget. If either of these are not passed, then the budget is, there's been a lot of wasted time, money, and trees involved in this, so it's, whenever the council does get ready to vote on this tax increase, just remember everything that it actually impacts. I know it's a tough sale, it's not easy for me, but if you take it as serious as I do, it's the only answer. But now if somebody has a better answer, if somebody has a different answer, please bring it forward. It's, like I did also talk about in the work session, I'm not married to this, this is, this is a budget that's, that can easily be adjusted, and when we do get ready to vote on it, I already have some amendments that need to be made to it because of our retirees coming forward, and somebody mentioned earlier about not even having a budget. Well, that is, we do not have to have a budget, but we'll be running things very inefficiently. And I guess one example of that is going to be like tonight, from the floor, I need to ask you guys to authorize or release some funds for several different items here. Lot of this, and the very first one, for example, the Fountain City Arts Festival, we have some grant money that's included in this. Once we, we have received the grant money, it's already been deposited in our, in our general fund. If we do not go forward with this, then we will have to refund some of our grant money that we have already received. This is an annual event, it can be argued, it is a quality of life, tickets are sold. Anyway, this does bring some money back to the coffers. Also, we have some softball, baseball fields that need to be taken care of, some general, general-type housekeeping there that left up to you guys to decide what we're going to do. If we do not pass a budget, you will be seeing more and more of these, that is going to be clogging the system up and making it a very inefficient way to do, to do business. The employees that, that have been the backbone of the city of Prattville, you know, they are willing to step up to the plate with the furlough, mandatory furlough days. I've been willing to step up here to the plate by reducing the mayor's salary, $900 a month for the car allowance, doing a furlough day. Whatever the council decides on this, there has been a lot of time, blood, sweat, and tears put into it, there's a lot of lives that are impacted on it, so please, please consider everything. And the other thing that you need to also consider about this, besides the city employees, are also our community initiatives. The library, which I think is a very vital part of the community, it serves a function, it allows people to, to continue their education, to get jobs, be productive in the community. If the budget isn't passed, they don't get their allotted amount. So it's, there's a lot more to this budget than what a lot of people, that I think a lot of people have really realized. It's, it's very, very delicate, but it's also a living and breathing document, just because we have a line item in it, doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be spent. I know I have a, we have a ancient telephone system in the, in the city hall throughout the city, there are some dollars in there for a new upgraded phone system. Just because it's in there does not mean that we're going to be spending it for that, but it's, the budget is in your court, if you see and need to make any cuts, any adjustments on it, please feel free to do that, but we need to move forward with this. We have a lot of lives hanging on the line, it's going to end up costing the city a lot more money down the road if we do not move forward with this in a timely manner. But going back to our agenda for tonight, our consent agenda, as you can see, is a lot of reapportments, it's generally just some good old housekeeping, and so there's nothing really that unusual with a lot of the stuff. One of the items that we do need to vote on, on first, is naming our interim city clerk, so please move that to the top of our list there and act on that immediately. Besides that, I think that's all I have to say for tonight.
Okay, any questions for the mayor? Councilman Renninger?
Mayor Gillespie, I have three resolutions that are coming from the floor tonight, sponsored by Councilman Fink.
Yes, sir.
Since you and I have already discussed this earlier today, and I see that there is a critical date on each one of them, on March the 26th, let me ask you this. My point of order, since this involves spending money, unless the roads are suspended, it will carry over to our next meeting. Can your department heads and their staff respond in, say, a four-day notice and get this stuff done, if we hold these expenditures as we really should for two weeks?
In the first one-
Actually, that could be three weeks, because we're planning on changing.
The Fountain City Arts Festival, that really does need to be passed tonight. If not, we will be having to, I'm pretty certain we'll be counseling the event, we'll be refunding grant monies, and if I'm not mistaken, I think on an annual basis, we usually have somewhere around 15,000 people come through, through that.
Okay, I don't understand why you would counsel it if we could pass it before the actual event, which is March 26th.
Advertising, scheduling of different banquet rooms and stuff like that.
I see. Okay, how about the preparation of the fields and the lighting?
Let me double-check on that one. The lighting, if, if we don't move on it immediately, it's, there's a good possibility it's going to cost an additional $2,400 for that. The, the paint and the, the marking and, let's see, anyway, the grounds equipment and so forth, the chalk. Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I misquoted, I said 2,400, 24,000 on that, and then also he was telling me that they might not be able to get the lights adjusted in time. On the marking for the field, you can, but I would actually encourage you to go ahead and pass all these tonight, and that way, next week, we'll have a new slot on there, and I will do a better job of getting these items before you.
Just for the record, so we can get it in the minutes, I want to express my concern about the short time that the council's being given to act on this. I don't think that's appropriate, and I know that your department heads plan well in advance, not blaming you, I'm just asking you to work through your departments and get them to bring this to us on a more timely basis, please, sir.
And I appreciate your, your thoughts and comments there. I'm going to take the blame on this one. I'll have it done. I hope we'll have a budget, if we have a budget, this type of stuff won't be before us. And like I say, I hate to say, but this is one type of inefficiency that we might have to deal with over the next length of time that it takes to get a budget passed, and, but whatever, you know, however the council sees fit, but I would appreciate if you would pass it tonight. Thank you.
Is that all, Councilman Renninger?
Yes.
Anyone else? Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate all the work that you're doing, and all the department heads, and helping us to try to pull this thing together. Just a couple of things. You mentioned the library and the non-departmental items, the library has been cut significantly along with just about every agency, and just for the public's sake, the figure that I believe, we just about went from 900 and some thousand to about 400 and some thousand, and we're still at that figure.
Right around 500,000, yes. So, yeah, so I hate to say that the library was, was cut approximately 25 percent, went from 265,000 to 200,000, because of that and some other cuts in their revenue stream. My understanding, they are having to cut their hours considerably, which saddens me a lot, because like I mentioned earlier, the library, for example, it helps people to get the education that they need, to get jobs, to help bring back to the community. So it's, it's definitely not something that I, that I took lightly, but, you know, it's something that had to be done. And I'm hoping that if the budget is passed, if the increases are, are made, we get back on a sound footing, hopefully we get on the sound footing before our next fiscal year, and we will be able to bring back to some of the quality of life, community initiatives that we need to. But I will be very mindful, and be working with all of you guys as to exactly which, which ones, we, I do, I need to be doing a new, a more diligent job as far as those community initiatives, and looking, seeing exactly what brings back to us, brings back to the community, and, because there are some worthwhile projects out there, and it's something that, I hope that we might be able to get some committees together, citizens' committees or so forth, and, and come up with an exact dollar amount on what we have to spend, and then, and then come back and be able to spread those out fairly. But now, the library, library is, I guess, to say, a different animal. They have, we partner with the, with the county, with our library system, the county contributes to them, the city contributes to them, and, and we've been doing, as far as I'm, if I'm not mistaken, fairly certain that they have been flat-lined for 10, 12 years or so now, it's been quite some times since they've had a raise. So it's, they've been doing a great job, providing the services for the community that they have at a, at a flat line, without any increases there, except for what they've been able to bring up with promotional and benefit-type revenue increases.
You mentioned furloughs, and we all know that employees are going to be taking the furlough, the council, I'm sure, I know, will be taking furlough also, we'll be doing the same thing as well as you. That's reduction, but we need revenue, and I heard a constituent tonight mention holding these resolutions that are revenue producers. I'm asking you, as mayor, on items one, two, and six, is it any one of those items, especially number two, would it be feasible for us, because we're in a situation, not only where we need to cut the furloughs or other means, but we need to be bringing in some additional revenue, even if we don't pass the budget, so in your opinion, would it be prudent to move forward with, with any of these?
If I was sitting up there, I would be supporting each and every one of them tonight. We are still working with finance director, interim finance director, human resources director, we're still looking over each and every department individually, trying to see where we can find more cuts, decreases in our expenditures. I've also have been hearing of some additional revenue streams, but, you know, it takes time to investigate some of these and so forth, and maybe at the next council meeting, we might be able to bring up some more revenue streams. That's something that we're still in the works on, but it, I know it's a difficult decision, decision, guys, but, you know, that's, the, the easy ones are not a real decision anyway, and I guess that's one reason why we get paid the big bucks, to make those.
And finally, Mayor, again, thank you for your time. Mr. McDowell may I help with this one? Once this council, if it passes the sales tax increase at any time we choose, so if the revenue stream seems to come in within a year, instead of two years of that one cent being enacted, we can always come back and redo that.
That is correct.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, was that it, Councilman Wood?
Yes.
Any other questions for the mayor? Okay, and I do have one question, following up to Councilman Wood's questions about one, two, and six. One being the sales tax, two being the wastewater surcharge. In terms of these revenue measures, if we look at them from the time required to put systems into place, in other words, notifying local merchants, people that ring up, you know, have cash registers that charge, collect sales tax for us, there's a window of time that is, is a minimum that you would want to give notice, and the same thing I would assume with the wastewater surcharge, which will be billed as we currently do through the waterworks billing system. So I guess the bottom line to my question, since both of those currently are slated as written to go into effect the first of April, if they, if one or both were held tonight, would that be an issue? If they were held until our next meeting, again, would that be an issue relative to putting those other pieces into place, to still be mindful of the one April implementation date?
Talking with, with our local water board, who does our billing and collection for us, they tell me that they really need a 30-day window, so it would be, we really need to go ahead and pass that one tonight. As far as the sales tax, most businesses that I know of are computer-based, so it's a two-week window is the most that I've heard that all, you know, most of them need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is report from the council on special committees. Councilman Striplin?
I'm not on the committee.
Thank you. Councilman Wood?
No, but you need to put him on some committees.
I got some committees I can put him on.
Thank you. Councilman Bowles? Councilman Fink?
You're actually on leisure services committee, I believe, if you're taking the place of former Councilman Gillespie. He was on my committee on leisure services, so unless Council President Miller changes that, I'll be happy to have you on my committee.
Yes, and that was my intent, to fill the seats across the committees that Councilman Gillespie vacated, and I will be giving you an orientation on that. And at a minimum, those will be the committees that you will be slated for, so.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Wood?
If he would like, I would call him out for him right now.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Albert Striplin, Leisure Services. Streets Drainage, Albert Striplin, Chairman. Heritage Center, Albert Striplin, Chairman.
Which one?
You can just write them down. I got your name where Bill was. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. A couple of things. We do have three resolutions from the floor at the end, and of course, as the mayor pointed out, those are based on the fact that we don't have a budget, and each, he's recommended that we suspend the rules, so we'll deal with those after the regular agenda. The other thing is, our next meeting in two weeks, scheduled for March 15th, actually is in spring break week, and several of you have asked me about rescheduling that meeting. I have polled, I think, everybody, and the 22nd has looked like an agreeable date for each of you, including Councilman Argo, who I contacted by phone earlier today. So, if at the end of the regular agenda, someone could consider bringing a motion to schedule our next meeting to March the 22nd, that would be appreciated. Councilman Argo had notified us several weeks ago that due to job demands, he was not going to be able to join us tonight, so that's the reason that he is not here. We will now move into our regular agenda, and as the mayor mentioned, we will need to entertain a motion to bring item number four, the resolution to name interim city clerk, to the first item, so that we have this council meeting covered with a city clerk in that position. So, I would entertain a motion to reorder the agenda in order to do that.
Mr. Chair, I move that we move item number four on our regular agenda above the consent agenda and have it as our first item of business this evening.
Councilman Renninger has moved to relocate item number four, the resolution to name Stephanie J. Sutherland as interim city clerk of the City of Prattville, to our first item. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles, is there any discussion on the motion to change the order of the agenda? All in favor of the motion to change the order of the agenda signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this item is now the first one for us to consider. Councilman Fink, would you introduce this resolution?
Yes, with a lot of pleasure, actually. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that Stephanie J. Sutherland be appointed as interim city clerk of the City of Prattville for a period of 90 days to act in such capacity effective immediately. Mr. Chair, Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Fink, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Renninger, any discussion on this resolution? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution passes. The next portion of our agenda is the consent agenda. Councilman Fink, could you introduce this for us, please?
Yes, sir. I would offer consent agenda resolution to appoint Walter Kennedy to the Legends Park Improvement, to reappoint Carla Bowles to the Commercial Development Authority, to reappoint Lee Crawford to the Industrial Development Board, to reappoint Lisa Miller to the Industrial Development Board, and to reappoint Ken Calvert to the Industrial Development Board. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Consent agenda has been introduced and moved by Councilman Fink. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The chair votes aye, and the consent agenda passes. The regular agenda, first item, ordinance, to amend ordinance book 95, page 19, to add section 11 regarding imposition of certain sales and use taxes. This item was held from our February 15th, 2011, meeting. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Renninger?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Ordinance one, ordinance two, and resolution six need to ride together because the adoption of the budget is based on the information that's in ordinance one and two. So, if you're going to hold one, we need to hold them all. If you're going to pass one, we need to pass them all to make this work. Just want to let you all know about that.
Mayor, you may want to comment on that. My understanding is that either the sales tax or the wastewater surcharge could ride independently, but that, in other words, they're not necessarily tied to the budget, although the budget itself is built on those, those two could ride either one independently. That was my understanding.
They're individual items, and they're voted on individually, that's true. But funding this budget is predicated on the tax, sales tax increase, and the wastewater fee increase. If we don't do that, we're back to, I'm not going to say square one, but we're back to a lot of hard work ahead of us to redo the budget to make it work right. The mayor wants to be recognized.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Well, especially on ordinance number two. That is our wastewater. Now, that is, that department, and no fault of their own, has been running in the red approximately a million dollars the last year, last several years, a million dollars per year. So, if anybody's going to entertain any kind of ideas of holding one or six, number two should definitely be passed. If not, we will be continuing to run in the red in that department, and then also, waterworks will not have enough time to correct the building, the building process on it. So, it's just pretty much left up to the council, I guess, black or red.
Again, my understanding is that either one or two could be passed independently, but the budget could not without the two because it is based on them. Councilman Bowles?
I would like the full council to be here to vote on one, because this affects 31,000 people. Number two affects 30, well, not everybody's on sewage, but I'm okay with number two because that thing's running in the red, and we've got to get those revenues in here. So, I'm comfortable voting on number two. I'm not comfortable voting on number one without the full council. Thank you.
So, then, are you suggesting a motion to hold?
Making this, yes. Can we hold number one, please?
Until our next council?
Till our next council meeting.
Okay. Motion to hold ordinance number one till our next council meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin, any discussion on the motion to hold item number one? Councilman Renninger?
It's actually a very good thing that we do hold this because there have been some nuances about the sales tax that need to be ironed out, and that'll give us plenty of time to iron those out, so it would be very appropriate to hold that.
Any other discussion on the motion to hold item number one? Okay, all in favor of the motion to hold item number one till our next scheduled meeting, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and item number one is held until our next meeting. Item number two, to amend Prattville City Code, Article 3, Section 13-111, regular monthly charges, and Section 13-112, same minimum, flat rate. Gentlemen, you have, and this was held from our previous meeting as well, and you have in your packet items that will, by necessity, constitute an amendment if we're going to consider this tonight. The reason being that we, if you'll recall, at our last meeting, adopted the new city code after this was introduced. So, this is sort of some housekeeping to make it consistent with that city code revision that we adopted subsequent to its introduction. So, again, if we want to entertain this ordinance, it will, tonight, it will need to be amended. Councilman Renninger?
Mr. Chair, I move that we amend this ordinance as listed. The following item, the following amendments need to be made due to the adoption, we just went through that, lines 3, 8, 10, and 14. We need to add the words Chapter 66 after the city code. Lines 3 and 10, Section 13-111, changes to 66-358. Line 5, add the word "schedule" after "monthly charges." Line 4 and 12, Section 13-112, changes to 66-359. Lines 10 and 14, remove adopted July 6, 2006. Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt these amendments.
Motion to amend, item number two, the ordinance, do I hear a second on the motion to amend?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin, is there any motion, is there any discussion on the motion to amend? All in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the amended ordinance is now properly before us. Any discussion? Councilman Renninger?
Yes, Mr. Chair, for the same reason that Councilman Bowles just gave, I have great concern about voting on this without a full council here. However, if indeed we do choose to vote on it and not hold it, and I guess that's what we're going to do, I will support it.
Thank you. Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Doug, you may have to help me here. I just want to get some clarification. It's been said that if we don't pass all of these together, that's going to kind of throw the budget off. It's my understanding that passing this produces additional revenue. Additional revenue is additional revenue, and if for some reason we fail to pass the other segments of the budget, which would be sales tax increases or whatever increases, the only thing that would do is that we would have to find another revenue producer, right? Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I would make a motion to hold till our next council meeting.
Okay, motion to hold, item number two. Do I hear a second? Okay, motion to hold fails for lack of a second. We'll now vote on this ordinance. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, and this ordinance passes. I'm sorry, Councilman Striplin, you were?
Aye.
So, this ordinance passes five to one. Item number three is an ordinance to request to surplus lost, stolen, unclaimed, confiscated property from the police department. Councilman Bowles, could you introduce this ordinance, please?
Be it ordained by the City of Prattville of Alabama as follows, that the items listed below are hereby declared surplus of the police department and ought to be removed from the inventory of said department. Kenwood amplifier, 350W max power, serial number 3030010, Tenet's JL audio speakers, Dell in-person 750 laptop, computer with mouse, cord and black case, serial number Do I need to read the serial numbers?
This happened, David, he can just.
Thank you, we'll be here all night. TV, VCR, Walmart, robot, infinity speakers with cords, data transfer switch, Polk audio speakers, call speakers, e-machine speakers, multiple twin adapters, HP Sportsmart, cord and all-in-one printer, Lorax time lapse recorder, Secon V8 video recorder, a Minolta STSI maximum camera, two small black camera bags, Sony CD camera, one large camera bag, Minolta STM camera with lens, one large Sony camera bag, Dell Improm laptop, Compass laptop power cord, Dell laptop, black case power cord, black computer bag. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell all said inventory through governmentdeals.com. I so move.
Moved by Councilman Bowles, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood, and by point of order, this item will hold until our next meeting unless there's a motion to suspend the rules.
So, move.
Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Wood, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Renninger, is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? I'll remind the council that this will need to be unanimous in order to suspend the rules. All in favor of suspending the rule signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the rules are suspended. This item is now properly before us. Is there any further discussion on this item? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this item is adopted. The next item on our agenda is a petition for the vacation of vacant sanitary sewer easement in Pratt Center. Councilman Wood, can you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas the City of Prattville is the owner of the 215-foot sanitary sewer easement situated in the City of Prattville, Elmore County, Alabama, as described in Exhibit 8, and where the sanitary sewer mains for which said easements were obtained have been relocated as part of the development of Pratt Center subdivision Plat 1, and where a specific purpose for which the easements were created has terminated and said easements are no longer used or needed for their intended public purpose, and whereas the owners of Pratt Center Plat 1 have submitted a declaration of vacation to the City Council stating their desire that the City of Prattville vacate said easements described in Exhibit 8, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the vacation of the easements described in Exhibit 8 is extended to and approved. Be further resolved that the mayor and all other necessary and proper representatives of the city are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver or attest to signature required on any document reasonably necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. The city clerk is instructed to have this resolution recorded in the office of the judge approbate of Otterville County, Alabama. I so move.
Moved by Councilman Wood, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink, any discussion on this resolution?
Mr. President, is there any cost involved in this?
Is Joel or David, either one?
$10 to record it.
Is that all? Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of this?
Tom.
Councilman Fink?
Yeah, point of order, do we need to, well, we've suspended the rules already, but do we need to address the $10 because it's, we don't have a budget? Just asking.
If you want to make the mayor's point, we do.
I'm going to get it from them, from the people that want it.
For those in the audience that didn't hear that, Mr. For those in the audience that didn't hear that, Mr. McDowell said he was going to get the money from the people that want us to do this, so it won't be at city expense. Was that all, Councilman Fank? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and this resolution is adopted. The next item is to adopt the city of Prattville fiscal year twenty-ten, twenty-eleven general operating fund budget. Councilman Renninger, would you introduce this, please?
Oh, well, after I ask our legal counsel, you think you could get somebody to come up with this other money on this one? It's good stewardship, by the way, that ten bucks. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that for the purpose of financing the conduct, the purpose of financing the conduct of affairs of the city of Prattville, Alabama during the period March first, twenty-eleven, and ending March thirtieth, twenty-eleven, inclusive the general fund operating budget for the city's revenues and expenditures for such period as prepared and submitted by the council, to the council by the mayor as attached. Be and the same is hereby approved and adopted as the official fiscal year two thousand and eleven budget for the city of Prattville, Alabama, which totals thirty-three million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. I think I've got that figure etched on my brain. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Move by Councilman Renninger, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood, by point of order, this resolution will hold until our next council meeting unless there's a motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Chair, can I make a clarification? I don't know if anybody picked it up out there or not, but Councilman Renninger read March one, twenty-eleven, and end in March one. There may be some confusion out there, so if you got September on yours.
Yes, it's during-
I stand corrected, Mr. Councilman Wood, you're absolutely right. I was wrestling over the content and the organization of the sentences there, but you're absolutely right, it ends September the thirtieth, twenty-eleven.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Okay, so by point of order, Councilman Striplin?
Just a question for clarification, that we talk about that we're adopting a budget for a period of March one through September thirtieth. And then at the bottom, it says we're talking about the fiscal year of two thousand and eleven. We've, we've already got actual numbers for five months. I'm just asking, is this the appropriate information that should be in the resolution?
That's a good question and we can look at that ordinarily when it holds, you know, we don't, when it's an automatic hold, that is the subject of, David, correct me if I'm wrong, an amendment when we revisit it in two weeks, at our next meeting?
Can you revisit it?
No, 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 if it holds automatically-
Correct.
We usually don't get into the discussion portion.
Correct.
So, I mean, what would be your guidance in terms of?
I think Councilman Striplin's got a good point and I don't have an answer to it.
So it would be something we would discuss in terms of an amendment when we revisit it? Councilman Renninger?
I suggest that you call a finance committee meeting between now and the next regularly scheduled council meeting where we can discuss this and make adjustments in the form of an amendment if necessary and bring it forward on March the twenty-second.
That sounds good. Thank you, Councilman Striplin. And that just got you on another committee. We, as, as we pointed out earlier and the mayor mentioned, we now turn to see if there are any resolutions from the floor.
Yes, Councilman Miller.
Councilman Fank?
Yes, I'd like to bring the first resolution from the floor, which is to authorize the release of funds for the Sixth Annual Fountain City Arts Festival. Whereas the city of Prattville sponsors the annual Fountain City Arts Festival through the Cultural Arts Center, and whereas this annual event is scheduled to be held on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eleven, and whereas the Alabama Bureau of Tourism and Travel has voted this event as one of the top tourist attractions in the state, and whereas funds are needed to carry out this event, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that funds not to exceed seven thousand, five hundred dollars are hereby authorized and approved and said funds are to be made available from the general fund. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Move by Councilman Fank, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Striplin, in order to consider this, there will need to be a suspension of the rules.
So move.
Move by Councilman Wood to suspend the rules, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles, is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Okay, all in favor of the motion to suspend the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and the rules are suspended. This resolution is now properly before us. Is there any discussion on this resolution? I, I do have a question, Ms. Cook, this- This is a revenue generating event, can you sort of give me what the true bottom line would be?
Yes, sir, the dinner that we host on the twenty-fourth usually brings in six thousand dollars and then we collect fees from the artist and the food vendors and sales tax revenue for whatever the artist sell as well.
So the bottom line is that, that will this-
It almost breaks even. I don't have exact numbers from last year, but we would be within a thousand dollars of breaking even.
So in this figure, seventy-five hundred is not actually what, how much of this is required or all of it?
The five thousand dollars will go to the advertisement, which our grants that we receive stipulate we must provide their use of name in our advertisement in order to have people present or be present at the event. And then the rest of the money is supplies that are needed, since this is a free event that we open to the public, we have to provide the supplies to the artists, such as our children's pavilion area, the canvases and the paint and such, we provide all of that so that's the cost that's incurred there.
Okay, but I guess I might not be asking the question the right way. The true cost of the seventy-five hundred, that's not recouped in any way by fees or grants or anything?
Yes, yes, all of it, except for the thousand dollars. We, the six thousand dollars that we make off the dinner goes back to offset that cost as well as the money that we receive from the artist and the food vendors. We turn that back into the general fund.
So the true cost to the city, if I'm understanding you, is not seventy-five hundred dollars but closer to a thousand?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and this resolution is adopted. Is there anything else from the floor? Councilman Fank?
To authorize the release of funds to purchase paint and chalk for city-owned playing fields, whereas the city of Prattville Department of Leisure Services maintains all city-owned playing fields for baseball, softball, tennis, and soccer, and whereas there is a need to purchase paint from Sherwin-Williams in order to paint the lines on the grassy fields and the tennis courts in the amount of two thousand, six hundred and one dollars, and whereas there is a need to purchase chalk from Grow South in order to mark the lines on the clay fields in the amount of five hundred and twenty-five dollars, and whereas opening day ceremonies are scheduled to be held on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eleven, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that funds in the amount of two thousand, six hundred and one dollars to Sherwin-Williams and five hundred and twenty-five dollars to Grow South are hereby authorized and approved to be paid from the general fund. Mr. President, I so move.
Move by Councilman Fank, is there a second?
Second of the motion.
Seconded by Councilman Renninger, by point of order, this resolution will hold until our-
For suspension of the rules, Mr. Chair.
Next meeting unless the rules are suspended. Councilman Renninger has made that motion to suspend the rules, do I hear a second? Seconded by Councilman Bowles, is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. President.
Councilman Fank?
I would urge my fellow council members here to move forward with suspending the rules on this, given the fact that we've got discussion about the twenty-second being the next council meeting, which is where that would put this, this resolution to be acted upon. I, I don't think it's, I think it's asking the department head a lot to try to get all of that done in the short period of time that he would have to get that done, so I would urge each of you to support the suspension of the rules and I'll not make these same comments again when it hopefully is before us properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fank. Any other discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Will now vote on the motion to suspend the rules, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and the rules are suspended. This resolution is now properly before us. Any additional discussion on this resolution? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and this resolution is adopted. Is there anything else from the floor? Councilman Fank?
Yes, I'm offering a resolution to authorize the release of funds for the replacement and adjustments to the field lights at each of the city-owned playing fields, whereas the city of Prattville Department of Leisure Services maintains all city-owned playing fields for baseball, softball, tennis, and soccer, and whereas there is a need to have some of the lighting replaced and adjustments made prior to opening day ceremonies to be held on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eleven, and whereas Code of Alabama nineteen-seventy-five as amended, Section thirty-nine dash two dash one defines these services as a public works contract allowing for the purchase without submitting bids. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that funds not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Mr. Electric and said funds are to be made available from the general fund. Mr. President, I so move.
Move by Councilman Fank, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles, by point of order, this resolution will hold until our next meeting unless there's a motion to suspend the rules.
So move.
Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Renninger, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Fank, is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Councilman Fank?
I would offer the same comments that I made on the, as far as the chalking and painting. I would offer those same, those same comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fank. Any other discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of the motion to suspend the rule signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and the rules are suspended. This resolution is now properly before us. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and this resolution is adopted. Is there anything else to come from the floor? Councilman Bowles?
I would like to make a motion that we would re, have our next meeting be March the twenty-second of two thousand and eleven at six P.M. due to AA holidays and I will not be present that week. And I feel like the whole board needs to be here for this next meeting.
So your motion is to reschedule our March fifteenth meeting until-
Till the twenty-second.
The twenty-second, one week later at six P.M. Do I hear a second?
Second of the motion.
Seconded by Councilman Renninger, is there any discussion on the motion to reschedule our meeting to the twenty-second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and that resolution is adopted. Mayor, do you have any closing comments? No? Okay. Now the council, Councilman Striplin, any closing comments? Councilman Wood?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Look like March the twenty-sixth is quite a busy weekend, but let me also add for everybody, North Island Park Day is an event that I give every year. It just happens to fall every year, well, when, when ball season and things are going on in the arts festival. But again, this year, North Island Park Day, this is the twentieth year we've, we've done this and it's a day of food, fun, and fellowship where anybody can come out, not just people in District Two, and get a free hot dog and a free Coke. And money goes back into the community. A lot of people don't know that. I solicit businesses for donations for this event. We pay for the food and then everything goes back into the community. We've given to Habitat for Humanity, Otterville Christmas Team, ROTC, a lot of different groups and over ten or fifteen scholarships, all over a thousand dollars or more every year, so we try to do something positive. So just to let you know, if anybody wanna contribute to the North Island Park Community Fund Day, please see me, it is a worthy cause. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Councilman Renninger?
Yes, I always like to follow the lead of a good man. The mayor made a statement that he was going to be writing a check for the equivalent of a furlough day. I will also be doing that. Mrs. Thrash has already given me that amount and every month that our employees pay for furlough day by missing that day of work, I will write a check for that equivalent amount and submit it back to the general fund.
Thank you, Councilman Renninger. Councilman Bowles?
Since you brought it up, I actually went to Ms. Thrash and she's deducting my pay so I don't have to write a check. Thank you.
Councilman Fank? Councilman Wood?
Yeah, I just need to ask a question on that. Ms. Thrash, can you do that? Can you legally do that?
Think you're gonna have to write a check.
Okay, I'll write a check.
I think Ms. Thrash have a figure for what it equals for each council member and it's more than two percent, I believe, right? I would think. Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Wood, and I, that was my understanding as well, that it would be a requirement that we write a check for that because it wouldn't be something that you could withhold due to the policies and rules and so forth, so, but I think the sentiment is each of the councilmen is voiced that, that they will be participating equally, what the equivalent is to the furlough days that the city employees have. I will be scheduled on a finance committee meeting and getting, for you, Councilman Striplin, a more formal list of your committees, but essentially it will be the spots that were vacated by the predecessor in District One. And I also would share that during the past couple of weeks, including our work session, our public hearing, we got a lot of good information. We, I think, are going to be moving towards trying to construct some sort of a, a set of committees that would heavily involve citizen participation in a variety of topical areas and I, I think that that's something that we're gonna be working on over the next weeks to months with the mayor's participation and sort of coming together to, to look how to utilize some of the expertise and talent in our, our citizenry. And with that, I would remind you that our next meeting, we have rescheduled it, it will be March twenty-second, and I appreciate everybody, city staff and citizens coming out to join us tonight and look forward to seeing you again on March twenty-second. Mayor, you have one more thing?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm sorry, it slipped my mind completely, but our city codes are now online, so anybody who wants to get on the city website, they can pull codes up without having to come down and waste precious fuel and so forth, so I wanna thank the city staff and everything for getting that up on, online for us. Just another cost-saving measure.
Thank you, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved, I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded, we are now adjourned.